All right.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustee Meeting for March 22nd at 6:32 PM. Will Julie call the roll, please?
Dan Gaffney.
Attending from Independence Township.
Dan Green.
I am here in Independence Township.
Allison McFadden-Kesling.
I'm here in Independence Township.
And Nancy Moon.
Here, Village of Clarkston.
And Marilyn Pomeroy.
Here, Independence Township.
And Anne Rose.
Here, and I'm in Clarkston Village.
And Chris Shaw.
Here, Independence Township.
And Julie Meredith, I am here in Independence Township.
I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, Dan has approved, Jan has seconded. Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye when your name is called.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
And Anne Rose.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Almost forgot this.
Motion is approved. We'll have our call to the public. Pretty sure I saw Laura.
But she needs to un-
Yeah, she's muted.
I think she's trying to unmute.
Oh, okay.
Can you unmute on the left-hand side down at the bottom, Laura? There you go.
Am I okay now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the Friends of the Library still have their reading market as an online book sale. And from December 1st to March 11th, we sold 443 books. We took in $816 in book sales and $125 in donations. And right now, we are planning one June 5th outdoor sale. We really have not worked out all the details, but we feel that that is going to happen on June 5th. And our general membership meeting will be April 15th on Zoom. And there I, that's it.
That's very concise. Anybody have any questions?
Well, just, just a comment, it sounds like that reading market took off kind of nicely, that's- I mean, it's not a huge amount of sales, but it's pretty decent for something that just started out.
I think that Joanne Broda is one of the people and Judy, Julie Myers, they've really done a great job with that.
Boy, you're not kidding.
Well, it's very steady income, so that's good.
Right.
I think during the, you're in this COVID era, I think we should, that the Friends should over, should emphasize donations. I think you've been underplaying that, because that's, that's how I've been supporting Friends, is just through donations.
Main money donations, right?
Money donations.
I, I thought we had done fairly well with that on the reading market, but I agree, that's a good thing to do.
Thanks, Laura.
They've been receiving some through the membership, when people renew their membership, I think they've been adding donations and that, the, the number that Laura just gave, I think doesn't account for the membership donations that are coming in.
Oh, that was just reading market.
Yeah, just through the reading market.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody, anybody else have a question or a comment?
I think that's really done very well over the time this has been open, it's been amazing.
I love it.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I love it, keep it up, I'm, I'm a big supporter. My, my kids-
Well, it's just really nice to, to, you know, the creativity to come up with a new solution, because book sales has always been the, by far, the biggest moneymaker for the Friends, and to have, to have looked at the possibilities and got, and apparently gotten the word out kind of nicely, because that's, given the prices of the used books, that was, that's pretty good book sales.
I have people come and tell me about it, they're coming over to the library to pick up the book they just ordered or something like that, you know? It's really getting around.
That's good.
Excellent, let them know that we really appreciate all of those efforts.
With that.
Are there any other public comments today? If not, we will close the call to the public. I'll accept a motion to accept the consent agenda, which has eight items on it this time.
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay, Jan has made the motion. You seconded Allison.
Nancy.
Nancy.
Nancy, thank you. Want to make sure that our secretary has a chance to get that, our administrative assistant. Does anyone want to question any of the eight items? If not, let's call the roll and see if everyone approves.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Anne Rose.
Yes.
Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Library statistics.
We don't have a statistics compilation this evening due to some technical difficulties with my trying to get all of the children's stuff gathered together, so.
Does it, it does appear that our entrances are growing, aren't they?
Yes. Yep, and we are getting good turnout at our virtual programming, and we've had a lot of growth in a number of our programs. For example, Elena pointed out that her teen, teen Creator Cafe is what she's calling it. She's had to keep increasing the number of people that can be accommodated by that program. It started out she was doing 15, then she was doing 25, then she was doing 30, so that keeps growing, so. He's very excited about that. That one she has to keep a little bit small, because she has to create the kits for them to come and pick up, so there's a limit to how big that can grow. But she just keeps trying to increase it as much as she can in terms of the production of creating those programs, so, very, very popular. I'll bring some pictures of some of the really cool things that they've been making for next month.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, so we'll see how statistics look next month, how about the library director's report?
Okay. So in terms of general update, in January, the board approved the posting of the Full-Time Community Relations Volunteer Coordinator and the Full-Time Head of Children's and Teen Services, in an effort to allow for a thorough selection process and still facilitate the timely appointment of these two positions. The March 8th Library Board meeting was postponed to March 22nd, and I just wanted to put that in my report to make sure that was in the record as to why we did that. Next item, in February, the new Community Information Network website, now known as the Clarkston Historic District website, went live. I presented the new site to Clarkston Historic District Commission and to Clarkston City Council. We will continue the rollout with a presentation at the Friends Membership Meeting. We're also beginning a collaboration with Clarkston Schools to develop the youth pages on the site to be more engaging and to accommodate the local history projects of our students that they'll be working on in those, in the upcoming months. The timing of this project will be a great opportunity for the new Head of Children's and Teen Services to get to know some of the teachers and the IT staff at the school district, since we're just starting to, starting that particular project. Next item, the library's audit of the 2020 books will once again be conducted by Gaybridge and Company. This is year three of a three-year contract with this auditor. The gathering of the documentation has already begun and the field work is set to begin on April 26th. Next item, recently, there has been an update of the Uniform Chart of Accounts, which is part of the guidelines set at the state level to standardize the accounting practices of governmental entities. These new requirements are set to take effect for organizations with a January to December fiscal year on January 1st of 2022. Fortunately, the chart of accounts we've been using was in compliance with the previous guidelines, so it looks like there will just be a handful of changes that we will need to implement. This means that as we work on the library's 2022 budget, we will have some line items with new numbers. We will wait until after the 2020 audit to work on updating the library's chart of accounts, so the auditor can assist in making sure we're interpreting the changes correctly. This will involve creating a crosswalk chart that will list all of the current budget line item numbers, followed by a budget line item number each will be come beginning January 1 of 2022. Many will stay the same, so we will highlight the ones that will change to make them easier to spot and help facilitate that transition. Great. Now I'm just gonna randomly change the numbers on you.
Yeah, well, I guess, that's kind of, I was thinking maybe they were adding more detail, but they're not, they're just, just changing this. Alrighty then, that makes no sense. Adding more detail could make sense, where you have a kind of a broad category and you want to have some sub categories, but just changing random numbers makes no sense to me.
Well, one of the examples, I, it, I don't know if it makes sense or not, but I, it's a different way, a different philosophical way of thinking of it. So one of the things that they're doing is that libraries, library materials, like library books and the actual collection, used to be in a number that was with capital improvements and things like that. And they've now decided that technically books are capital improvements, they're not-
No, they're really not.
So those numbers will now be moved into, I think they're moving them to supplies, which also doesn't make sense to me, but I'm not sure there's a better-
There should be something kind of in between supplies, I mean, they are an asset, but they are not a capital asset, because they don't, collectively, there's enough value to make them a capital asset, but you don't purchase them collectively, you purchase them book by book by book by book, so, yeah. That's all, I was just curious to see if they were adding more detail, but, oh well.
When some areas they are, but most of the areas where they're adding detail are not areas that affect us, because we're such a small entity.
Right, well, but, and, and, I mean, I've noticed through the years that we're using way fewer numbers than, say, for example, the city of Pontiac used when I worked for them. Now, they used a lot more numbers, because they needed a lot more categories, but, right? Okay, just was curious.
We'll see how it goes.
There are a lot of library directors, there are a lot of library directors in that meeting thinking, why are we doing this again? Just 'cause.
The people, the people that set up the chart of accounts at the state level need job security, so they have to come in and make some changes every once in a while, or.
Well, from the library perspective, it felt a little bit like changing the Dewey Decimal System, and you just don't do that.
Interested to hear the rationale.
Exactly. We're really, oh, at the October meeting, the board approved the funding of the InReach, a project to integrate our Polaris ILS with the Melcat ILS in order to streamline our interlibrary loan process. Due, due to circumstances that were out of our control, COVID-related, of course, the project took longer to get underway than we anticipated, but the implementation process, which began in February, has been going very smoothly. The setup for this integration has taken place and staff directly involved with ILL were trained on Friday. There will be a training for the rest of the staff in the next week or so, and we are scheduled for a soft launch of this new system on April 6th. This will streamline the workflow for staff, and the change will be seamless for the patrons. Because the two systems will communicate directly, essentially what this means is that account updates, requests, checkouts, and material transit information will update instantaneously. So instead of you put interlibrary loading a book and then waiting to find out if it's in transit and all that, every time something changes, it will immediately show up in your account and it will be much easier for you to track. So the patrons are gonna love it, but there are some things behind the scenes that the staff had to learn to do, so. And once those are all implemented, it'll be much easier and the workflow will be faster. Next item, usually this time of year, we welcome spring by discussing the library's lawn mowing contract and posting an RFP. However, last year, when the board selected the contract, he offered a two-year contract that would hold prices at the same rate for the 2021 season, so the board has accepted that two-year contract, and the service is already in place for this year, so no RFP tonight.
Yay.
Yay. Little things, right? Okay, and then in terms of collaborations, each year, the library is part of the committee that plans the Clarkston Community Awards Celebration. In 2020, the usual breakfast that takes place in May had to be canceled, but the winners were recognized in a video that was shared online. This year, the event will be virtual and will take place on Thursday, May 13th at 7:00 PM. In its 36th year, this annual celebration recognizes the people and organizations that make Clarkston a great place to live, play, and do business. The planning committee is hopeful for a return to the traditional breakfast celebration in 2022. And then last, the library will once again be participating in the Clarkston Area Youth Assistance Program Pin Wheels for Prevention. This project places gardens of blue pinwheels throughout the community during the month of April to raise awareness about the importance of the well-being of our youth. The Blue Pin Wheel is intended to remind us to help you feel safe, hopeful, and welcome throughout the community. Despite certain limitations caused by the pandemic, we anticipate a record number of pinwheel gardens blooming around town. If you would like to, like a garden of blue pinwheels to plant in your own yard, you can purchase one through the Clarkston Area Youth Assistance website at www.caya-mi.org. Options include a 30-pinwheel garden, a 10-pinwheel bouquet, or a seven-pinwheel vase. Your pinwheel order should be ready the last week of March and can be picked up at the library in the lobby or through curbside pickup.
Oh, good.
That's part of our, part of our contribution is to be the curbside pickup.
All the clerks will be delighted.
They're so used to bags of stuff out there, I'm not sure if they'll even notice.
Any comments or questions? It's been a busy month.
It has been.
If not, let us move to regular business, the fun part.
The fun parts, let's get to the fun parts. Okay, at the January 11th meeting, the library board approved the posting of the Full-Time Community Relations Volunteer Coordinator position. The selection committee consisted of Marilyn Pomeroy, Trevor Nguyen, and Julie Meredith. We received 32 submissions and interviewed four candidates. The committee conducted a second interview with the leading candidate and reviewed the comments of her references. Andrea Sissy Phillips has a communications degree with a creative writing minor from Sienna Heights University. She's been working in, in the nonprofit field, most recently for North Star Reach, a camp for children with serious health challenges and their families. In this position, she demonstrated her skills in design, digital media, and communications. Her energy and enthusiasm were paired with careful coordination in her first large fundraising event that included all of the details of volunteers, caterers, and staff, resulting in a successful gala that surpassed the previous eight years. During her second interview process, she had a chance to talk to staff and volunteers who were impressed with her knowledge and ideas for the role she would fill here. The selection committee recommends Sissy Phillips to be the CIDL's New Community Relations Volunteer Coordinator. Based on the wages of other staff and Sissy's education and experience, we recommend a salary of $47,500. This is a budgeted position, and the recommended wage can be accommodated by the current budget. A small budget adjustment for benefits may be required later in the year, dependent upon the insurance needs of this candidate, if they are significantly different from the previous employee in this position. But that budget includes a cushion to accommodate some unanticipated change in coverage, and so I don't anticipate that we're going to have a problem, but I always like to wait until later in the year to make that decision.
So, just as we have, we had-
If you'd like to say hi.
Many, many candidates, especially during COVID, people are now beginning to want to move around. And so, we were pleased with the quality of the candidates. And with the interview process, and are delighted to recommend Sissy.
Very good. Very nice. Nice to see you, Sissy.
I'm, I'm very excited, should this be approved, to start and continue making an impact in your community, so thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, yeah, we're looking forward to.
Yes, we are. I, I would like to move that we hire Sissy at the salary of $47,500 with the benefit package, date of hire, April 19th.
I think Dan was first to second. Most enthusiastic. Dan got in there quick.
A little Alison and I kind of hit the, this finish line at the same time.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Just welcome aboard.
Right, so, let's call the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Anne Rose.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Motion is approved, we welcome Sissy, we're so glad you will be joining us, we're looking forward to it.
Yes, very much.
She made a, she made a good impression, she had a chance to talk to Julie Sislitz from the Friends, and she made a good impression on the Friends as well, so.
Good.
Good. Because they'll be working, I'm sure, quite closely together.
Yep.
So that will work out well. And she also had a chance, quite a chance to talk with Trevor, with whom she would also be working, which is part of the reason he was on the selection committee. And everything went well.
Very good.
All right, let's move-
Do you have any questions, Sissy, or does anyone have any questions for Sissy, since she popped in to say hi?
Yeah, just nice to meet you.
And welcome.
And someday, we'll probably get to meet you in person.
Yes. Yes.
That's an awesome opportunity. So we're so glad you could join us tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, is, is it okay if I hop off after that? Absolutely, thank you, thank you for joining us, we really appreciate you being here, it's nice that everybody got to see your smiling face and to say hi.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, and I, I hope that you all were able to enjoy some sunshine, at least today, or sometime this week. And again, I really appreciate it, I'm really looking forward to starting April 19th, so, thank you again.
Very good.
Bye. Okay. So we were very pleased, and it's been part of our process recently to make sure that members of the departments that will be involved with the person that we're considering also have a chance to meet the candidate. And that the candidate has a chance to meet us.
Well, yes.
That's the process. Let's move to number two.
All right, at the January 11th meeting, the library board approved the posting of the Full-Time Head of Children's and Teen Services position. The selection committee consisted of Marilyn Pomeroy, Elena Jones, and Julie Meredith. We received 16 submissions and interviewed three candidates. A clear frontrunner was identified, and that candidate was invited to socially, to a socially-distanced meet and greet with the youth department staff and one of the department heads. Amanda Carr earned her MLIS degree in 2007. She was a part-time children's librarian at our library for a little over a year before moving on to a full-time position out of state. Staff members who were here at that time remember her as enthusiastic, creative, and hardworking. Since then, she has been the director of a small library, gaining a wealth of library experience, including the passing of a tax levy renewal. A life change moved her to Illinois, where she became a youth services coordinator, handling programming, scheduling, and outreach for young patrons. In an effort to expand her experiences, she became an adult services collection development librarian. This position expanded her expertise, expertise in collection management, but she also realized that she is better suited to a creative, energetic youth department. Our position provides her the opportunity to return to serving young people and to relocate back to Michigan near her family. The selection committee and the staff involved in the second interview process were impressed with her organizational skills, openness, interest in teamwork, and collaborative projects, and positivity. The selection committee recommends Amanda, Amanda, to CIDL's New Head of Children's and Teen Services. Based on the wages of other staff and Amanda's education and experience, we recommend a salary of $59,500. This is a budgeted position, and the recommended wage can be accommodated by the current budget. A small budget adjustment for benefits may be required later in the year, dependent upon insurance needs of this candidate, if they're significantly different from the previous employee in this position. But that budget includes a cushion to accommodate some unanticipated change in coverage, and this is another one, I, I don't know that we're gonna see any issue there, but if we do, just to be forewarned that we would have to make some, a little bit of shuffling of some funds if needed. Any questions?
I see she coordinated the five-year renewal of operational levy.
Hello. Hi, she's here.
Sorry, I was, we were driving back from an appointment, I didn't want to make anybody carsick, like watching me bounce in the car, so, that's why I was keeping the camera off, but I've been here, yeah.
Oh, nice to meet you, Amanda.
Nice to meet you guys, too.
Is it Amanda or Amanda?
It's Amanda, but I prefer Amanda, just, I did not answer to Mandy, that's the only thing I said. So, yeah. Not even my mother's allowed to tell me that anymore.
Okay.
That's very important.
Yes. We'll make a note of it. Okay.
You have any, anybody have questions before we make a recommendation?
Oh, wow.
Well, let us, at this time, let's take a motion to accept Amanda as our full-time head of children-
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's, the motion's made by Jan, second by Nancy.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions at the moment? If not, let's call the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Anne Rose.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you very much, I'm excited for the opportunity. As I told Julie, I really enjoyed my time there before, and the community and the staff, and it speaks very well to the library's culture, that there are so many staff members still there, so, I'm super excited, so.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually sign out, I'm still working remotely, so, thank you so much for letting me pop in tonight.
Oh, thank you.
I hope to see you all soon. Thank you.
Wow, couple of very qualified people.
Yes. Great candidates for these positions.
Oh, we were, we were pleased with the process and the candidates' answers, and there were lots of questions.
Okay.
And the candidates had questions for us, really a two-way interview.
Sure.
To see if there are, if we're a good fit for them.
Well, that's the best kind, because otherwise, people come and then discover that, oh, they don't like this place at all, and-
Or whatever.
And then you're back to the drawing board again, before you know it.
Right.
So we were, we were pleased with the process. It does seem long when you're reading all those applications, right, Dan?
Oh, Dan. Oh, good job, you guys, very good job.
Yes.
Dan knows, he's been through that. Okay, so the motion has passed. So we are ready to accept our two new candidates on the same day, which will make it a little easier for Julie to welcome them and give them their key-
Do some simultaneous touring, that'll help, that'll help speed up the process a little bit.
Good idea, good idea.
How about our monthly COVID update?
Okay. So we are in Phase 5. The services that we are currently doing in Phase 5 include, we're still doing curbside pickup. We do allow browsing of the collection, our occupancy limit is 25 in the main part of the building for, for the public. Public computers are available, we have keyboard and mouse covers for those, and the stations are sanitized after each use. We have printer, copier, fax, and scanner. We do also have notary service. Our programs are still virtual, but we do have the take and make bags for many of our programs, so that includes all of our children's programs, our teen programs, and a number of our adult programs now have take and make bags that are included, that can be picked up either in the lobby or via curbside. We've done a significant amount of expansion on our e-collections, Brad has been working on that. We have, we still have online library card registration, so people who would like to get a library card can do so online. As you know, the fines have been waived through June 30th of 2021. We are still doing materials quarantine of five days. A number of libraries are starting to look at that quarantine period, and now that we know more about COVID, and we know that that's not how it's transmitted, are starting to reduce that number down to three days is becoming more common, so Chris and I are gonna start looking into that and deciding if, based on the kinds of materials that we are bringing back in, if that five-day quarantine is still really necessary, if we can speed up the turnover of materials a little bit by reducing that, that quarantine time. And then we started something new on March 16th. We moved the computers that were in the meeting room back into the main part of the building, they are very carefully socially distanced. And now we are offering study space in our meeting room. The occupancy limit in there is no more than 16. There are eight- There are eight socially-distanced tables that can be reserved. We're doing quiet study on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from eleven AM to two PM, and then four PM to seven PM, and then Saturday and Sunday, we're doing that from two to five. You can reserve a table in advance, up to a week in advance, and then after that chunk of time is over, we clear out the room and the custodial staff goes in and sanitizes the whole space. The other thing that you are allowed to do is, when you reserve that space, you are allowed to bring one other person that you would like to study with. So if you have a tutor that you are, that you, as part of your bubble, you can do that, or you can, mom can come in and study with a, with a child or whatever, but if you're looking for that space, you can, you can do that. And then registering for those tables is not required. If there is a space open and somebody comes and not all the tables are taken, then somebody can, can do a walk-in, so that is possible as well. Any questions about any of that?
So it's just two people per table?
No more than two people per table, yes. And basically what we've done is the same thing we did with the computers. There's only two tables per wall, and then we left the middle of the room open, so there's plenty of distance between everyone. So you can walk in and there's a lot of space. And then we do have a table in there with a plexiglass shield that we're using to do notary, so that we have a protected way to do notary with two people. So they can sit across from each other with a shield in between.
So the twenty-five people who are allowed in the general spaces in the library are browsing. They're not sitting?
No. The people can sit at the computers, but they're in a different, so we kind of tried to keep the computers away from where people are browsing and we've got, and we've, we've tried to sort of maximize the space that we're using. So in some cases, libraries are given an occupancy for the entire building. Our fire marshal didn't do it that way. He did it based on enclosed spaces. So he did the main part of the building and gave us a total occupancy for that space, which is actually, I believe, ninety-six. And we're allowed to do up to fifty percent occupancy, and we're not doing anywhere close to that because we don't think based on the way the furniture is laid out and whatever that that's really feasible. So we're keeping it at twenty-five. Of course, we have to still count the, the staff space as well, so that's part of the reason we're keeping it low, no more than twenty-five public. So that allows for the, for staff that might need to be out there, plenty of room for that, that number as well, and still we would be nowhere near forty-five. So, so we're keeping that way down. And then the meeting room, we base that on every person who's in the room needs at least a six-foot bubble, and we kept that number much lower than, than what we felt could really be within that six-foot bubble because we didn't want it to feel too crowded in there. So.
We're moving.
Any questions about that?
Any comments or questions about?
Oh, as always, great job. Way to think things through and, you know, try to, to provide as many services as possible and still keep everyone safe, staff and the public, so.
So a couple of other things in terms of the COVID update, just a reminder of what the basic guidelines are for staff. We have seven key points that everybody is supposed to remember. Number one, stay home if you're sick. Number two, wear your face mask. Number three, wash your hands frequently. Number four, don't touch your face. Number five, maintain six feet of social distance. Number six, clean, frequently touch surfaces often, and number seven, be kind to one another. So those are the things that we just want everybody to remember. Those are the key points that we've been following since the beginning, and they have served us well. We've been, you know, people, our staff has been really good that if they think they've been exposed, they've been quarantined. We've actually, since the beginning, only had two people on staff who have tested positive. One of them hadn't been in the building and the other one was only here for a short period of time, but was near no one else and nobody else got sick from it, so we know our protocols are working. So that's been a positive thing to say. We also. What's that?
I said you brought us through a lot in the last year, very well, I think.
Yeah, it's been a bumpy year.
That's putting it mildly. Unforgettable.
We also have clear and simple signage for the public. We updated this the last time we reopened. There's a big sign out in front. I don't know if you've seen it. It's a big A-frame, and it says, "We want to be open to serve you. We must keep everyone safe. Please wear a properly fitted mask, stay six feet apart, sanitize your hands, and if you are unable to wear a mask, please use curbside pickup." So our message is clear of what, what we need everybody to do in order for us to be open. And the public has been great. They've been so supportive. And every once in a while I have to do a little bit of reminder mask up, but pretty much people have been really, really good about it. We have not, knock on wood, really struggled, and we've not really had any confrontations in terms of people not, not wanting to be compliant.
Excellent. And sort of related to that, let's talk now about board meetings.
Okay, so last but not least. So the Open Meetings Act allows for virtual board meetings through March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. After that date, virtual meetings are permitted due to emergency health orders. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has updated requirements on gatherings. And so I'm going to tell you a little bit about what they did in terms of the gatherings, and then I can kind of give you what your options are, and you can kind of weigh out your options and decide what you want to do. So the Library of Michigan provided us with a sort of a nutshell version. So the order that is in effect is the one that was put in place, announced on March second, and it went into effect on March fifth, and it's in effect until April nineteenth. So the new order says in terms of gatherings that non-residential gatherings are limited to twenty-five people, and there is no household limitation. It used to be ten people from no more than two households, and now it's, the limit is twenty-five, and there are no household limitations. And then non-residential gatherings that are outdoor are limited to three hundred. So the, the question that's been coming up again and again is, does this mean my library can have in-person public meetings again? And the Library of Michigan's response is, it depends. The limitation is a total of twenty-five people with social distancing and masking required. This means that in order to have a public meeting with twenty-five people, the venue would have to be large enough to accommodate, accommodate twenty-five attendees, including the board and the director and everyone else involved in the meeting, sitting or standing six feet apart from each other. A meeting can only accommodate as many people as can fit in the room with social distancing up to twenty-five people. So if a library decides to have an in-person board meeting, a library will have to make a determination on what they will do if a member of the public, public shows up to attend and cannot be admitted because there is no more space. And being denied entrance to the public meeting is, is generally a violation of the Open Meetings Act. This will be a consideration. It will be especially important to libraries with smaller meeting venues or libraries that have experienced a high level of participation from the public. A library can have a hybrid meeting where, for example, the board attends in person, but the public attends virtually. However, technology for these meetings must be carefully placed so that the public can see, hear, be seen, and they must be heard. Two-way communication with the board, and the public must also be able to identify which board member is speaking and how the board member votes. So in sum, while this new MDHHS order does open the door to possible in-person public meetings, individual libraries will have to determine the meeting format that is legally the best option for their situation, taking into account the risks and the requirements of each option. So just from there, you know, I talked to Bill about the, the hybrid meetings. We did do one hybrid meeting, and we had a really hard time with the sound. So it would be my recommendation that we not try to jump into another hybrid meeting just because we've struggled with those. So I would say you either want to try to meet in person or continue to meet virtually. We can make a case for either way. That meeting room is not really big. So what you would need to do, we currently have a limitation in that room of sixteen, and so we have seven people on the board, plus myself is eight, plus Nicole to take notes is nine, plus the person who does the recording is ten, so then you could have up to six attendees, which we usually have somebody from the Friends, and, and occasionally somebody from the public. We don't usually, so occasionally we have some staff that will attend to do a presentation. So I guess what, what you'll need to determine is if you feel if six is enough space for that.
Now, the governor's order is in place through April nineteenth, and our, would be April twelfth. In case, in case we wanted to do one more virtual meeting.
And then you can take into consideration the level of comfort of each of, each of the board members as well. I haven't had a chance to talk to everybody, so.
Well, this library is of the size that we can do either one, can't we?
I think you could.
We, we don't have to open up after the nineteenth. We don't have to have in-person meetings after the nineteenth, do we?
No, we don't have to, but no. And based on what Julie said, we can, we can say that we're not quite comfortable with the meeting room being big enough to accommodate the required number of people.
Well, and the longer you put it off, the more people will be vaccinated, too, you know, if you hold off till.
Right, which from my point of view, you know, I will be vaccinated. I'm getting my second one tomorrow. Yay. But I still have not had a conversation with my physician about, because I have been told that I should not expect to have full benefit of the vaccine because of my condition. So I have not had a conversation. I was waiting until after I got the second vaccine, and then I want to find out what can I and can't I do. I think that, that a board meeting where we're all sitting far enough apart, I'm pretty sure she will say that that's okay. But I haven't had the conversation with her yet, so.
How many of us still need to get vaccinations?
I have to get one more shot.
I gotta get my second. I've got my first. I haven't had my second.
I have to do a second shot.
Okay, so most of us have had one.
Good.
The question is, will we have had a second one plus a two-week period by April nineteenth?
No, I wouldn't.
No, it's pretty.
Because if that's the consideration, I think that I would recommend that we have a virtual meeting.
Right, I do, too.
Yeah, at that time, let's see how, what the restrictions seem to be. Since the moment the COVID rate is going up in Michigan, we were down at three-point something, and now we have, yeah, ratcheted up. So my recommendation would be that we hold a virtual meeting on the twelfth. Assess how this is doing at that time and how we are doing in terms of our two weeks past our second shots.
Right.
And there haven't been any complaints from the public that I know of, right? So, I mean, this seems to be working very well. You'll notice I'm always on time for these meetings. Just saying.
Well, and I, and I agree. I don't think that, that because it is available to the public if they wish to attend. And, and we don't normally have huge public attendance, which is, I, I think, kind of a good sign that we're doing a good job because people tend to want to come to a public meeting when they have something to complain about. If they're happy, they don't.
Seems like we're, we're sort of right on the fence here a bit, so why don't we do, you know, the virtual and then.
Do one more virtual and then reassess.
To not doing it the next time, probably, yeah. Unless something drastic happens to the numbers, you know, so.
So hold our. I'm, I'm comfortable with at least one more virtual and then just reassess it again at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we have a virtual meeting and then open to the possibilities of having a full-person meeting after that. We'll discuss it.
I will second that.
Okay, so Anne has made the motion to have our next meeting virtual and then reassess, and it has been seconded by Ms. Keesling.
Anne.
McFadden Keesling. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Or whoever.
All right, Julie, let's call the roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Alison McFadden Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Anne Rose?
Yes.
Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Would you like, between now and then, for Mr. Bowman and I to have a conversation about the feasibility of, of making that May meeting a hybrid?
Yeah, I was wondering if, if you were going to, you know, allow the public to call in, if it would help if they were on the big screen in there and so that.
We've had, we used it on the big screen the last time. The part that we were having trouble with was the sound, getting the two-way sound to be.
Yeah.
So basically, I figure by May, enough libraries will have tried hybrid meetings that we have more. We have a couple of options that, like the Canton Public Library has a hybrid option, but it would require everyone to be a little more tech savvy than I think we would feel most comfortable with. It has to do with having, everybody having a laptop who's in person, and you, it's still a meeting, but you have to mute and unmute yourself or you get feedback.
Oh, yeah.
So that's not a real great option for us.
No, that's not a real great option.
But as I said, as more, as more municipalities and libraries start to do hybrid, new suggestions will come forth. And so I'm thinking maybe by, by April meeting, we'll be able to say, hey, a bunch of libraries tried this and this worked and this didn't, and we think maybe we could do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
A reassessment in May, I mean, a reassessment in April as to where we stand.
Yep.
Right.
Forward. As part of that conversation, I will bring you some options for a hybrid meeting in case we have some people who would feel more comfortable remaining virtual, and others could be in person.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Excellent. So that has passed. We have direction for Bill and Julie about that. And that means we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Dan has made the motion. Who made the second? Alison. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye when your name is called.
You got it.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Alison McFadden Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Anne Rose?
Yes.
And Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has passed, and you can tell I'll be happy when we're in person.
You're doing great. You're doing great, Mary.
Yes, you're doing a great job. I just will be happy.